When are the trainings?
Oh, no, you should get in.
Nonstop? Year round? Nationwide?
In Colorado, but then they also don't do satellite sessions too every now and then.
So is Lynn from Enid going through it?
Sure.
Huh?
He's done.
When did he finish?
I don't know.
I don't.
You don't think he's through it?
He doesn't, he keeps changing. We've got a project over there. Get all done and go, oh, sorry, you need a grease trap. Oh, okay. Get on, hey, sorry, you didn't do the, I'm sorry, you killed my contract.
That'll be me for the first little while.
Yeah, I told-
It's terrible, but someone gave me a case of Red Bull today.
They did, no.
But I have a case on it.
It's the thought.
It's the thought.
Thanks.
I just, I-
Who gave you a case of Red Bull?
My renter who I went and fixed his A C.
A boy or a girl?
A boy.
Is he single? I love Red Bull.
I don't even know how to answer that question. I don't know. I have gas.
That was a very nice gift. What a nice person. And you were nice to help him. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Are you recovered from this trip? And you're ready to go again? I still want to see some pictures. I want to go now. Yeah. We have, we're not, after the-
You're number fourteen, though.
Hey, Molly. Three and a half weeks. Isn't that? The, the, um, six might leave.
Excuse us just for a minute. We have a council member who we're getting on via Zoom, so we are almost there. And I also need to excuse Councilmember Burton this evening. So it'll be the three members that are here, and we'll have Dave Harris on Zoom, and Dave Burton excused.
Of all times, Zoom decided to do all of its verification on me right now. I log into this several times a week.
Well, we don't want Dave Harris to miss the opening prayer. He's going to hang out, wait. We've got to be getting close.
The light just turned on.
Okay, Zoom has started, finally. We haven't had Dave join us yet, but I just started it. Um, I would think that since we have a quorum, you can go ahead and start the meeting, and I'll let you know once he logs on.
Okay, perfect. Calling to order, the Parawan City Council meeting. It is June twenty-sixth at twenty twenty-five P M. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five. It is five thirty-three P M. David Harris is joining us via Zoom, and-
He is on now.
We are ready to get started. We're going to have our opening ceremonies by Councilmember Topham. She will lead us in a prayer, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads this day to thank you for all the many blessings that we have been bestowed upon us. Please bless that, as we go throughout this meeting, that Thy Spirit will be with us to guide and direct us to make decisions that are best fitting for the city and for the citizens of this community. Please bless all of those that are sick or afflicted, and that cannot be with us today, that Thy Comfort will be with them and to heal them appropriately. Please bless those that are in our armed forces and fighting for our country, that they may be watched over and protected. And we are so very thankful for all of the freedoms that we have. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can we just test to make sure, Dave? We can hear him? Dave, can you hear us? Can we hear you? Yep.
Okay. All right, are there any conflicts with the council members, or any personal interest on this night, this evening's agenda?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
All right. So the time is now yours. If you're here for public comments, you have three minutes each to come up and introduce yourself, and we will give that time to you now, if that's what you're here for this evening.
Hi, my name is Cindy Hanley. Um, live here in Parawan. My house backs up to Mink's Park. So my house was the one the fire got within about thirty feet of the other night. Um, I know my mom has put complaints in for the last ten years about the park and about the lots. Um, I'm just here to say, I really need someone to do something. It's scary. So the lot next door is bad. There's a tree that's actually tearing at our roof. We have, we've been cutting at it, trying to get it away from our house. Um, and I'm thankful they came over and they cut down one part of it, but the weeds are still three feet out from the fence. And that was like the section that sits over near Vern by the barn and house. It's that whole other section. Um, so I'm just hoping something's done soon. I'm a little worried about the fourth. Um, and I know the kids are out there. One of my dogs here from Vegas, he's out there all night long barking out there. And like I, the officer that was there, great man. But I even told them, I go, if you guys need to do something where you can see what's going on, you guys can put a camera off my house, because you would have full view. Hook into my Wi-Fi, it's right there. So I'm just offering that to the town. If you need to do something like that, do it. Um, totally open to any of that. Night vision camera, you can get everything. So you can even get it with facial recognition. I know where to get it. So, um, but I just wanted to voice that to you guys, okay? That's great.
Thank you. And thank you for offering that, because we have been talking about a camera out there and needing Wi-Fi, so. Okay. Thank you so much. And we're really sorry for that scare. I am so sorry that happened when I heard about it and how close it got and what that was like for you. So thank you for being here tonight.
Um, my name's Keith Gilbert, and, um, I was, I was asked to come in and just kind of give it an update on what we're doing. Um, we currently open the sand and gravel operation on, on Gap Road. And, um, we're, there's been some pushback on it, to, to say the least. And we're just kind of here to let you know that we're here to, we're here to, we're here to do, you know, start an operation to try to help support the growth in, in Parawan and, and in the surrounding areas. And it's, we're trying to be good neighbors, and I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm more or less just here to let you know that we're, we're, we're here to be good neighbors and try to do a good job and keep the dust down, keep the... We, we recognize that there's, you know, sometimes when you start new operations, it's a little sensitive for some people that don't want to see it, so. But, um, that's, that's what we're doing. We're, we're just, we're trying to, we have a business to run as well, and we're trying to help the community, help ourselves, and kind of be a win-win partner for, for the community, so.
Did you say your name? Keith?
Keith Gilbert.
Okay. I, I didn't know if you did. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. For being here to introduce yourself. Appreciate it. All right. We have a long agenda, so if nobody else is going to come up, we'll move on. Um, we're going to move into, out of public comments, into a presentation on the amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And that presentation will be given by our City Manager, Dan Jessen.
Okay, so I just want to explain the, the way that it is on the agenda. Um, in a perfect world, we have these separated on two separate meetings. Um, we, we usually do a, um, what I call a housekeeping, um, adjustment to the existing budget at the end of the year. Um, after June thirtieth, we no longer can amend the, um, budget for any reason. And, um, a lot of things come in at the end of the year. There's things, decisions the council has made during the year. And if we don't amend the budget, if there's any one department or something that goes over budget, then we get a finding on our, on our audit. So it's pretty typical to have some year-end adjustments. Um, of course, we've been very active. So, um, the first presentation, public hearing in action item, is to amend the current year budget, which ends at the end of this June. And then the next presentation, public hearing in action, is to finalize and approve next year's budget, which we also have to do by the end of June as well. First state law. So I have a, uh, the first one. Dave, can you see that? Does, is it just showing everything on that screen? Are you still looking at the PDF of the agenda?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. Um-
Thank you.
I, I, I'll keep comments, um, to a minimum on the, especially on the men, amendments. Um, um, like I said, they're housekeeping. A lot of the things in here have been already specifically approved by the council, um, in various meetings, and, and then some of them are, are, um, like I said, housekeeping. Um, I'll just hit some of the highlights, the larger items. Um, basically, the format of what we're looking at, I don't pull the entire budget up. I just present the amendments by fund, which ones are done. Of course, the general fund and the, um, Capital Projects Fund have to have a budget that's still balanced, even with the amendments. So you'll see revenues and expenses on both sides, um, in those funds. And then on the, in the, uh, Enterprise Fund, sometimes we just adjust the expenses, so. Um, we have a police, uh, mental health grant. We're adjusting the revenue to allow for a, a mental health grant, and an early intervention grant, and a JAG grant that weren't in the existing budget. Um, we, uh, we adjusted the recreation line, of revenue line. Um, we took a second payment for the T R C C for pickleball, which we didn't have in there. And the other adjustment is the balancing adjustment to balance the expenses that we have. Um, the first set of adjustments, um, in the general fund is, we had to make some adjustments to the court, um, department, um, so that we could pay out the, uh, the settlement, um, for the judge, um, at the end of June is the, is the end of our budget year. We don't have anything allocated to next year, and we had to pay the judge through the end of the calendar year. So we had to make an adjustment so we can make that payout. Um, five thousand dollars, uh, copier, we talked with, with the council about that. Um, just looking at more of the larger items. We ended up spending more money in, um, in, uh, street repairs, um, on equipment. We, we went farther and spent more than we had originally budgeted on roads. Um, I think everybody would love if we did the entire city all at once. Um, and, um, but we ended up going a few more, um, lane miles than we had originally budgeted. Um, we have to adjust for the money that we are expending on a UDOT grant to, uh, work on the Two Hundred South, uh, project, where we're doing a, um, sidewalk. Um, that project came to be after the budget was created, so we're putting forty-eight thousand dollars into professional and technical for that. Um, and it won't entirely live in this year's budget. Um, these projects that split budget years are tricky, because when you're creating a budget, you don't really know exactly what's going to land in what year. Depends on the, on how the project plays out. So most likely, we'll have to adjust next year's budget for whatever doesn't get into this, into this year. Um, parks and materials. Um, we had a, we had a few line items that were related to, um, we've been playing catch-up on maintenance, materials, um, tools. There's some line items, um, related to those things that, um, frankly, our guys have been just busting, um, every day. They've been out there, what, busting hump? We had to adjust a few, um, fuel lines, um, because we're literally driving the trucks a lot, and we're just working them like crazy. So m- maintenance materials and supplies in the parks, um, several fuel lines had to be adjusted, um, for the same reason. Um, we had to adjust the pick, the recreation line item for pickleball expense. We did not have, um, we didn't know how much money we were going to spend. We ended up doing a couple more tournaments. Of course, with tournaments, there's offsetting revenue that comes in, and, um, but that was exciting to see that. Um, the pickleball court, um, expenditure, this we all think of as done and behind us, of that initial building of those four courts. Um, the council approved to make up the difference in the cost with general fund money. This is us actually adjusting the budget to do what we approved by forty-five thousand. Um, and that, and of course, now we're already thinking ahead to our next pickleball and what we're doing, but this is to kind of wrap up that. Um, capital projects, we had some large, um, adjustments, um, due to, we finally got the grant approved to cover the, um, the adjustments, the overage on the, um, airport master plan, sorry, the airport runway improvements, which got done a long time ago. They finally approved the grant to pay the difference for the, the adjustments that Sunrock had to do. So, um, this was all passed through, but we needed to show the revenue and needed to show the expense of that construction. We are going to have to adjust next year's budget, unfortunately, to take care of the final budget, and that's to get our consultant paid. We're just filing the paperwork now to get, now the FAA is functioning again, to get that last grant so that we can pay that pass-through. Unfortunately, that'll happen in next year's budget, and it is going to have to be done with an amendment, because we don't have the detail yet, so. Um, land acquisition for the bridge, um, this was money that came in as corridor preservation funds, and, um, and it landed in this year's budget, and we didn't have that planned for, but that's, that was county money, pass-through money, so. That was a large two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollar line item. Water fund, we had a, we had, I mentioned that we had to adjust fuel. We also had to adjust maintenance materials and supplies in the water fund. Um, in the sewer fund, same thing. We had to adjust fuel and professional and technical services, um, and repair to equipment, um, all in the sewer fund, some, some small line items. And then our final adjustment was, um, we ended up having a lot of large commercial transformers that were purchased. Um, and the, the money was spent in this year's budget. We'll actually, um, and we received most of the money for that in this year's budget as well. So adjusting the revenue, adjusting the expenses for those commercial transformers, they're, they're large, but those are paid by the private business that had to put them in. But we do have to adjust our budget, otherwise we'll go over on budget. Power purchase, um, we estimated one point three million, and it looks like forecasting the last two months, bill, we're probably going to be like one point three five million. So we're adjusting that up fifty thousand. And finally, the reservoir company assessment, that's a, that's only paid once a year, but two years ago, sorry, last year's budget, which it was in twenty-four, that payment didn't get in before the year, the, the year was closed. So we had two of those years that came out of one year, so I had to adjust that budget. So those are the, the main line items, um, that were adjusted in this year's budget as we wrap up this year. And we hope there's no surprises that come in after we can't adjust our budget anymore. That is my presentation.
All right. I need a motion from the council to open the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to hear comments regarding the proposed amendments to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The public hearing is now open.
Hi, my name's Janelle Zajak. Dan, I, you, you had my questions about twenty-five and twenty-six.
So we're going to have a second public hearing on now?
Right, got that.
Okay, good.
I'm thanking you. Thank you for answering those. But my question about this is, so what's the total revenue change, and what's the total expense change?
Um, I'll tell you. Um, the total revenue change, you want it by fund or total, total?
No, total, total.
Okay, total revenue is one million, two hundred and five thousand. Total expense change one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Thank you.
Good job, everyone.
All right. Seeing no movement out there, uh, I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing regarding the amendments to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Um, we're now going to move into a presentation, a second presentation, and this is going, going to be on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Oh, we'll take action, that's correct. Okay. Just have an interesting format tonight. So we will take action on this to approve those budget amendments.
Mayor, I move to approve, um, the amendments to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Um, now we're moving into the presentation on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Okay, this one's a little, a little more fun, if you're a budget guy, but I have kept it as short as I dare, and try to keep it as formative as possible in a shorter format. I go long and people complain, so. Um, this is the ensuing budget, and, um, make sure, and can you see that, Dave, online?
No.
Now can you see it?
There we go, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Want to make sure you can see it, especially since you're going to be voting on it. Okay. Only now, I'm sharing it. Okay, there we go. Okay, just to go over, um, uh, the strategic investments, um, a balanced budget with strategic investments. Um, we don't get to do what the federal government does, ours has to be balanced. Um, this year, we have a focus on infrastructure projects, focus on one-time investments, most of those being, um, grant-funded, and, um, employee pay parity. We have our implementation of a new pay structure based on the salary that was done. Key changes from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six. Um, I had a few, uh, questions that came in from, um, I had from Janelle, and from some of the council members. Um, there's some large variances when you compare year over year. The majority of those large variance, variances are as you are, um, as we're doing these large one-time projects, both on the revenue side and on the expense side, and across the different funds, we have a lot going on. And all of that money has to be budgeted. Um, it's on these, some of these projects that are large, multi-year projects, we budget for the whole thing, because we're never really sure exactly what the timing of it is going to be, what year it's going to land in. Um, but those are the, the majority of the changes in the variances year over year. And by the way, if you look at the budget online, um, we present that in this, the format that the state mandates. It doesn't show budget year versus budget year, and so I think if you could see budget year versus budget year, you'd see that there's not a lot of variances that large. But oftentimes, you're looking at this year's actual year-to-date, which this year hasn't finished yet, and some of those transactions haven't been entered into the system. So sometimes it looks like there's bigger variances. Um, large, the, the other key changes from fiscal year are the capital projects that we are doing in this year's, um, plan, um, and capital items being purchased in the different departments. And we have some large engineering costs that are for the, um, projects that are being designed right now. Um, for, part-time fire chief is a large, um, ch- change year over year. That isn't something that we've had in our fire department budget, so it's pretty, it's kind of a, a big change. And then, um, finally, of course, we have the, uh, the contract with the county on the Justice Court. So our Justice Court line items are, the entire department is zeroed out in the upcoming budget. Um, also, we'll be taking building inspections in-house. This isn't as much large, significant budget line item. It will impact budget revenue, once we negotiate what the new split will be on building impact fees, I mean, building inspection fees. But in light of not knowing what that is, I didn't plan for any additional revenue, but once we get that figured out, we'll go ahead and amend our budget to show that. Um, the biggest highlight, I think, that the public probably is interested in and cares about, is the fact that we are not asking for property tax increase this year. As far as revenues, um, we've seen revenues have been stable and growing. Um, revenues are difficult to forecast, especially in this, in this market. Economists all over the map are trying to scratch their heads and figure out what are the, what's the impact of tariffs, what's the impact, what's going to happen with inflation? Um, property tax, are, are values going to, going to be affected? Of course, property values don't impact our property tax. What impacts our property tax is new growth, and it's sometimes hard to say how, what's new growth going to do? And new growth is impacted by the economy, and, and, and it's impacted by things like subdivision approvals and things like that, so. Um, in this market, in this economy, it's hard to forecast them. Um, I've taken a, um, conservative approach to it. For example, the Kim Gardner Institute expects a three-point-four growth in Utah taxable sales, only forecasted two-point-six percent, um, property tax. We actually take that straight from the county. Our new growth this year is five percent, but we already know that number. It is an estimate, but usually they're pretty close. And I already mentioned building slash impact fees. Um, some of the large capital projects that we're doing that find their way into this budget. Um, every, we've been talking a lot about the water recharge project. It's approximately three-point-five million. I say approximately, because we still haven't put out to bid the diversion structure. That should be going out to bid within weeks. But we did get a bid in on the water pipeline project, and it was, it was close to what we had budgeted. We're hoping to keep this thing around three-point-five million. At that point, it is funded. So, um, we, we, you're going to see, um, construction starting. We've talked about that. Construction time is here, and the, and the entire construction part of the project will live in this year's budget. Water treatment project is the other water project we're going to, you're going to hear us talking a lot about. Um, we have gotten preliminary approval by Division of Drinking Water to borrow up to ten million dollars. They will give us a one million dollar grant. Neither of those things are in this budget, because we are just in preliminary design phase. phase. We did award the contract for the engineer, and we augmented our engineering budget in the water fund to, to pay as we're, as we're doing engineering, once we get the design done, and, and actually borrow the money, we'll amend the budget, and we'll pay ourselves back for the engineering out of that funding, but. So it, it doesn't really have a large budget impact, but just so everybody knows, this is a large project, a, a major project, and, and we're doing design of it. We're excited about it, and it's working its way into our budget, if only for, in that aspect. We're also still under design and permitting on our wastewater treatment, um, as we try to explore technology options of what we can do out of the sewer lagoons to treat that. Um, due to a phosphorus limit that the state put on us, we are effectively at capacity, even if we're not at capacity from a gallons standpoint. So we're working with Aqua Engineering and Bryanhead to design that. It may be that we get to a design and permitting phase where we're ready to start moving to the next phase, we may have to amend the budget to put money in to start doing things, but for the time being, it's pretty low level, um, expense on, on design and permitting, so. But it's a massive project that, that's gonna have a big budget impact at some point.
Nice bridge.
Yeah, you like that bridge? Um, I didn't wanna put a picture of our actual Main Street Bridge in its current condition. This is, this is the, what the bridge is gonna look like when it's done. I'm totally joking. Um, as everybody probably is aware, um, fiscal year 25 and then wrapping into 26 was the engineering phase of the Main Street Bridge. Fiscal year 26 will be the construction. We don't have large numbers in the budget for construction, because I think that money won't all flow through the city budget. We'll just, they will just send us a bill for the city match. Some things completely live in our budget, other things live in another, in the state's budget, and we just pay our portion. However, we did have to add in some money for the portions that the city is gonna be responsible for, that is not part of the grant, because we're gonna have to do some work in the flood channel and some cement work. And we don't have an estimate on that, so I threw an arbitrary number at it. When we have an estimate, I'll bring that to the council. But I did, I did throw some, some, uh, some money in there just as a, just to hold it open, so that we can do that, but, um, and then, again, another large project that doesn't have too many dollars in our budget, well, too many, it doesn't have 5 million, it's got a couple hundred thousand, so anyways, even though the project will cost about 5 million. Um, airport work, um, we have two, um, large budget line items that are, they're both carryovers, they're both a multi-year split. We wasn't sure on the taxiway rehab, how much of that would, would hit the, the budget that's ending, and turns out that hardly any of it is in last year's budget, most of it will happen this summer in the ensuing budget. Also, the master plan update is, um, moving forward, and they just, that's like a three-year process, they just intermittently bill us for that. So not even all of that will be in next year's budget, but we allocate the whole thing, just 'cause we don't know how much will get done when. This is one we've been talking about a long time, um, our plan is, we've gotten, um, we have 90% of the, the estimate preliminary costs, so that we actually know what we're gonna go ask for from CIB. As soon as we get that finished on the, on the estimated cost on the front end, we will approach CIB for funding, assuming they approve it, then we'll come back and, and put it out to bid. So we had all of this in last year's budget, and we just didn't move it forward. Um, this year, we, I don't know if anybody knows, we've got temporary AC units, we're just, we've just gotta get this library project done, so. We have it budgeted, we're, we're kind of guessing at the number, but, um, if we have to come back and amend the budget, we will. Hopefully, we can get it done for 300,000 or less. If we do, it won't necessarily be an expense of that, um, depending on how the money flows with CIB. Uh, we may have to run it all through, and then, and then the revenue will come in from the bond and pay us back, and then we'll make a payment, so. Depending on how the funding works, it can, it'll be amended one way or the other, so. But it's a big project, and it shows up in our budget. Another project, a large project that shows up in our budget, may or may not happen, and that is the Valentine Peak Ball Field Lighting. Um, we have been working on some funding, which I don't wanna talk about yet, because it's, we're, we're asking somebody to give us some money on that, um, a large not-for-pro, not pro, nonprofit organization, and, um, if we can get them to come to the table, it'll be a coalition of funding, we'll probably make some other, um, inquiries, maybe ask the county for some money and things like that, but things are looking somewhat favorable, favorable enough that we did put it in our budget, it's grant dependent, we're estimating that cost to be about 700,000, may or may not happen, but it is in the budget. So everybody, cross your fingers, we can, we can find a way to get that funded this year. Um, the rock church roof, uh, we've talked a lot about, um, I, I found this picture online, and I thought it was a great picture, because you can actually see the roof really well, and you got the P hill behind it. Rarely do you see this, this angle, um, and I think this is a beautiful picture. Other than those rain clouds kinda give me flashbacks to 21 flooding and 22 flooding. Um, we're estimating that project at 155,000. That is, um, um, Dixie Levitt Group said that they would match what we could earn, up to 50,000, so we budgeted the full 50,000, we're hoping that we can earn that much. Plus, we already have money set aside from other donations, plus we have this, this SHPO grant, which turns out that they paid us, it, after we got the budget created, they paid us, and we ended up putting in this year, but the money will get spent one way or the other. That will be a complete re-roof of the roof, and we will be tying in the large, um, I'm gonna call them king rafters, there's four very large rafters in there that, that structurally hold that whole thing together. Those will be tied into the rock walls for structural stuff, and we have to do that while the roof is off. We're waiting for that estimate before we can move forward on that project, but we're hoping to move forward this late summer in doing that roof project. Other highlights, um, we have a UDOT grant to, um, do design preliminary engineering on exit 75. That's gonna, that's always gonna be a UDOT project, but we need to do some work on the frontage road, and we're trying to kind of figure out how to set our transportation master plan, so that his development goes on, continues to go on around the freeway, we can, we don't ever wanna have to tear out a building, because UDOT wants to put the interchange in a different place or reconfigure it, so we're, we're getting, we got money for that, that'll be happening. Impact fee studies, um, carried forward from the prior year. Culinary water rate study, there's nothing in the budget, other than to do the study, but the results of that study could dramatically impact the budget. We'll have more conversations about that, but that study will be going on. That study is going to include what the impacts of that large water project that's gonna be done, and what its impact potentially on the, on the rates could be. So it's gonna be a large one, if you wanna follow that, come to Water Board. Eventually, once the results get done, it'll come to City Council, but. Um, we have money in the budget for fire, infrastructure improvements, and equipment. Some of the equipment, um, our new fire chief was gonna go after some grant money to get turnouts and things like that, so there's some small numbers in there, but there's some larger numbers in the water budget for continuing to replace fire hydrants, and, um, we have some PRVs. In fact, a vault just got installed, they're installing it today. Well, it's in next year's budget, so that's when the, that's when the invoices will come in. Um, that will, we'll be able to adjust some pressure zones to improve some pressure to some areas, and, um, there's two PRVs, one of them will service some, um, development that's going on, and the development will have to cover its cost on that PRV. The other PRV's been putting in at city's cost, which will increase, um, some fire flow for a certain number of our, um, neighborhoods, so. Continuing to work on fire infrastructure. And finally, we've been talking forever about getting a well, a generator on our main well, and, um, this, the world has shifted on us in the last year, and, um, this has become a m- major priority. Um, and we're, we put it in the money, we put it in the budget to get a grant to pay for it. If there are no grants available, we will be asking the council to just fund it. Um, we do not wanna be in a situation where Rocky Mountain can turn off our, our power when we're in the middle of battling a fire, and we cannot fill our tank, because we don't have power, and we somehow have to work through diplomatic methods to get our power turned back on while there's a fire needing to be fought. So we need a well generator. Bringing our springs online will help a lot with not, not being as dependent on the, on the grid, but this has become a high priority, and we put it in the budget, so. Okay, socks and underwear year. That's what I told the, uh, department heads, um, as, as I mentioned earlier, one of the big, large things was, as everybody knows, we did a, a major salary adjustment, and so I, I told the, the departments, don't ask for anything unless it's really needed, and, and the council was really, really, really frugal in approving all of the little requests that came in, and I think we're pretty successful in that. The majority of the, these large items that we're spending, all, all these millions are grant funded or, um, enterprise fund, um, investments that are required, so. Um, that pretty much summarizes the year, is socks and underwear year, um, for most of those other things. Executive summary of the budget, um, this is the year of project implementation. We're gonna be just running as we, all these things we've been preparing, engineering, designing, getting grants for, this is the year we're gonna be building a lot of stuff, and it's gonna be a lot of work. Um, I'm happy to say the budget is balanced, the city is well managed, and fiscally sound. That's my presentation. Was that shorter than ever?
You did good.
Uh, that's Dave online.
Excellent.
I, I like the year of project implementation, is, is kind of a mouthful, it's like a, the year of...
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
You, you, you can replace that, you're the mayor, I think that you're giving that to your duty.
Project implementation, I was like, the year of building, no, not that, that's a...
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with a better tagline.
Okay, project implementa, we'll stick with that for now. Um, all right, so at this time, I need a motion to open the public hearing to hear comments on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2025, 26.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing to hear comments on the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2025 to 26.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open.
Larry Zajak, Parowan City resident. Um, I just have one question, and, and that is on the ball field lighting. I was under the impression that we were donated some lighting a couple of years back, and I'm wondering just how that's being implemented, or the, what the plan is there.
I see Jeremy out there, I was like, well, you had to put him on the spot. Um, we can, I mean, we, I, Dan knows it, I know...
You, you want question and answer, I got a quick answer, Jeremy. We're probably not gonna use that lighting. It is older, halogen, the poles have to be twice as heavy, and the power costs will be more than twice as much. So we got it, because we didn't want them to throw it away, we weren't sure if we're gonna use it, and as we've looked at it, we've realized, we will be far, far, far money ahead to put new LED lighting in. Did I sum it up?
Yep, that's pretty much a good summary. Um, they are way high wattage bulbs, so by the time you run larger wire for the ampacity that's needed with larger transformers, I think we're money ahead to just bite the bullet and do LED and get a better product, so. Good question, though.
And I also do know is, like, um, that's the reason why SUE replaced the ones and let us take those, is because they were not cost-effective any longer, but, um, they didn't wanna just throw them away either, so.
We were hopeful we would be able to use them.
We may be able to use, maybe the cages or something, we'll see, maybe not.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll move now out of the public hearing, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to pu- close the public hearing, um, proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2025, 26.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Um, so now we need to take action on that, and it is a roll call vote, if this is a resolution, so it is, uh, the discussion and approval of the annual budget for fiscal year 2025, 26, it's resolution 2025 dash 06. If there is discussion, we would have it, if there's not, it would just be a motion to approve that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 with the resolution 2025 dash 06.
It'll be 2020, fiscal year 2026 or 25, 26? You said 25.
Oh, well, that's because that's what's on here.
Oh, the resolution 25.
Right.
My apologies.
Was I, okay.
Councilman Topham.
That's okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, and we'll start with Councilmember Downey.
Aye.
John Dean, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
Do I need to say my name?
Sorry, Dave.
You did, but...
Do you wanna say it again?
Sharon Downey, aye, to make it official.
All right, thank you, that motion carries. We'll move now into our consent agenda, these are items that are administrative in nature and are usually approved by one motion. The first one is the approval of the city council meeting minutes from June 12, 2025, and the approval of the warrant register for June 26, 2025.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 11 and 12.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, that motion carries. Moving now into our action agenda, this is item number 13, we're super excited about it. We have some audience members that I believe are also super excited. Um, this is recognition to our Parowan City Library, it is, uh, an award that was received, and our librarian will come up and tell us a little bit more about it, but it was the Utah State Libraries Division's Quality Library Award, and it was awarded to us, it's up here on the table, um, it's a beautiful award, and do you wanna come up and tell us a little bit more about it? Cory Adams, of course.
You can bring whoever you want up. So sorry, I'm on grandma duty tonight, so. Um, the Quality Library Award is, um, given to awards that go beyond...
I gotta say, she's a budding city council person, she was, uh, saying aye on all the things, so...
Well, that was Lucas.
Oh, oh, okay.
And so, um, so, it's libraries that go beyond what they, um, are, like, the minimum of what they're supposed to do, and so you have to reach certain, um, benchmarks and, uh, do certain programming and stuff to get the Quality Library Award, it's really, it's really an honor, so, yes, we got that in 2024, and we are working on getting it this year, so, yes.
Excellent, thank you, congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Will you come out?
I saw Jeremy taking a picture, do you wanna hold the award and turn around, so he can get like a proper photo? Okay.
Hey, Lucas, do you wanna come stand up here with us?
Of course he does.
Come here. Do you wanna come too?
Okay. Yeah, so you're, it's hard to see over, no matter what.
You, come on your chair. Gotta hold the chair, so it doesn't crash.
Hold on.
Stand right here, we got you.
Get over there. Stand, stand up on it, they can see the, the two players. I know, I should let him sit up.
There we go. Now we're all the same height.
Thank you.
He's almost taller than me. Few years he will be.
Well, we can, Cory, unless you, we can drop it back off, but you can leave it here if people wanna look at it. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Cory, thank you for all you do in the library.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. The next item...
They're adorable.
Here we go. The next item on the agenda is, um, not, number 14, and it's the Swimming Pool Aquatic Safety Award from the Utah Local Government Trust, and Shelby Bartlett, our pool manager, is here to tell us a little bit about that, and what they had to do, and what that day was like when he came out, um, and show the award, because it's really cool.
It's pretty cool. Um, my name's Shelby Bartlett, I am the pool manager. We get this award, or we have received this award, two years now in a row, and essentially what it is, is it's us having a safe facility, but also having a safe, like, emergency action plan, and being able to adequately implement that. So the gentleman from the insurance company comes out, and he goes through some training scenarios with some of the lifeguards, and helps us to either adjust, or train more, or know what we need to go through to train and keep that facility safe for everybody. The biggest thing is, is like, is that people need to understand, not only is this my staff and people at the city that are helping to make this happen, but also a lot of the community... and people at the city that are helping to make this happen, but also a lot of the community members and people who have donated time and effort to helping create the pool that we have. And it's doing an awesome job. This is part, the inspection report.
This is the report, the inspection report, not the award, but I wanted everybody to see that score on the right. Last year's score was ninety one percent. Of course, you remember the year that it was like zero, right?
Yeah.
That one, that one found its way in, into the, on this screen a few times. That's a really cool thing.
That's a clap. Do you wanna hold your award and turn it around?
No, it's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Jeremy's taking a picture. Oh, but you will. You may not want, it's either your front side or your backside, your choice. Thank you for being here tonight.
I love the field goal stuff.
Alright.
Um, hey, could, just a caveat on that real quick. Um, we, uh, as we finish this budget, we will be, as we finish the budget year we're ending in June, that's the last of, of what we officially were still spending money as part of the construction. I mean, we just finished the plaster, which was part of that original funding, so we'll get all that wrapped up. In next year's budget, the only thing we put in was just maintenance money on the pool. So, we'll also be able to wrap up our financial report of all of that stuff. Um, so, really cool, exciting.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move into, um, item number fifteen. This is the consideration and possible approval of the A J M annexation and annexation development agreement. And Dan will cover this, and Dallas Beckner is here as well, from Go Civil.
Yep, let me bring that up online. Um, okay, so. First off, we have, we have two line items on the budget, I mean, on the agenda that, that are both in regards to this, and they're in the, they're in the order they're in on purpose. Um, first, we have consideration of the annexation and annexation development agreement. Um, if, if that passes, then the next one is the annexation by ordinance, because we have to do it by ordinance. That's what the state lieutenant governor requires. Um, the annexation agreement is where the rubber meets the road, of course, and why we're doing it in that order. Um, so, make sure Dave can see this. Stop sharing. And I'll share the agreement. Um, I think everybody was frustrated last week that we did not, or last meeting, that we weren't able to vote on it, and, and we were ready to move on. The thing is, is we didn't actually have. Oh, that's why I got that stupid thing up. Okay, hang on. We didn't actually have the, um, agreement in a word format that we could, um. Geez, I put it on the wrong screen. That we could vote on it. And we made some adjustments just this last meeting, it needed to be reviewed by the attorney and by, um, Mr. Meisner's attorney. Those adjustments were made, um, namely to revert to the original proposed red line language on the parks, and we wanted to look at the vesting clause and a few other things that had been done in the prior meeting. We got all those done, sent them to both attorneys and Mr. Meisner, and everything was answered in that regard. So the agreement that we have represents the things that the council specifically worked through and voted on, and we have an agreement by the developer on the wording. So do you have any questions, council? Any comments by our attorney? Any comments by, by the representative of, of Alex Meisner? I can answer anything on the agreement.
Well, not anything, no.
I think all my questions have been answered.
Yeah. We've been at it a long time.
Yeah.
Long time.
The, was there anything that Alex, any comments that he had?
No, I mean, we're, we're good if you guys are good, so.
Fingers crossed, is that what you're hoping?
Yeah.
I know.
What are you talking about? You get a bill, every time you get a bill for this, every time you come. We should have a few more meetings. I'm joking.
Yeah, I feel like I'm good.
I'm being facetious.
We gotta get through prime west.
You had to go there.
Alright, if there aren't any questions or discussion, then we, this is on the action list this evening. Um, so we would need a motion to approve the A J M annexation ordinance twenty twenty five dash.
Nope, nope, nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump ahead?
The ordinance is the next item.
Consideration and possible approval of the A J M annexation and annexation development agreement. Sorry, I did jump ahead. So are we doing those as two separate items?
Yeah.
Okay.
I propose that we approve the A J M annexation and annexation develop agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, and I do not have this as a roll call vote?
It's not, the next one will be.
And so just, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries, thank you. Now we're moving to sixteen, which is H A M annexation ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve.
So this is just the ordinance? Oh, gosh, I thought you were gonna do a present. The annexation agreement's, uh, is the hard part?
I propose that, uh, we approve the A J M annexation agree, ordinance two thousand twenty five dash one, two.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, by roll call, starting with council member Downey.
Sharon Downey, yes, aye.
John Dean, aye.
David Harris, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
Alright, that motion carries.
Okay, we did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, this next item is a discussion and a possible change of our net metering policy, and Jeremy Franklin is here to present that. We had a power board meeting about this last week, was that a week ago?
Yeah, no, seriously.
Yeah. And so we are now bringing it to the council for a discussion and a possible vote.
Okay, so the only.
This is the old me, is this what you sent, was the old policy?
Yes, that's the existing current policy. And the only thing we're looking at changing is, uh, if you scroll up just a little bit, Cali, right, uh, hold on, right, there, that, uh, hurry up, right there. Um, I just had a lot of customers, a lot of solar salesmen, some industry experts kinda asked, why do you cap it at five? So I did a little research, looked at some other utilities in the area, and, uh, if you look around southern Utah, you'll find caps from five to eight with this circumstance, or sixteen with this, and twenty with this, so it's kind of random, I guess. Everybody's net metering policy's just kinda all over the place. But, so like I said, the current cap is set at five. Um, and the reason I kinda wanna look into it, to raise it, is with, with a five KW cap, um, larger homes that use a, that have a lot of usage, don't really see the benefit like a smaller home would. So if you, if your normal household usage is five KW and your solar is five KW, a lot of times your, your bill will almost be, um, your kilowatt hour part of your bill will almost be erased by a five KW source system. We have a lot of homes that have a sixteen KW, twenty KW, um, some even higher than that. And so the, the, the benefit to them is not as realized as some of the smaller usage homes. Um, so as we talked about with the power board last, uh, month, they made a recommendation that we raise the cap to start at eight KW, um, but also, um, allowing larger than eight KW, um, if, uh, on case by case basis, if your twelve month history shows that your home warrants that. Um, so basically an eight KW would be like a brand new home, that we have no history on, eight KW would be your cap, or if you wanna wait a year so we have your history and we can look at it case by case, then we would, um, allow that. And the power board recommended we go, um, basically a hundred and ten percent of the highest peak KW in a twelve month period, so that way a lot of their usage gets covered. Um, Cali, do you have that other thing I sent you? Can we pull it up? Oh, okay.
So, I have the, let me look at my email. I look at the correct email. I thought I just saw the one attachment. Oh, there's two.
Yeah, so.
Which one is it?
The, the first one I kinda just covered, um, that one I just covered, so go to the right one. So I just kinda did a breakdown of a, of a customer that has, wow, that's hard to see.
I'm gonna zoom in.
There we go. So, um, basically this is like a larger system, like a sixteen KW system. And I took their one, took one customer's twelve month history, um, which you'll see on the left here, um, their peak KW, and then their kilowatt hours in blue. And then, uh, there's a website, you can kind of estimate your solar production , uh, based off your address or your area you live, um, which is in green. Um, and then on the right is just the difference, where the negatives are is that month they would've bought a little bit more from the grid, and then the green ones are, they'd have produced more. Granted, like, their usage isn't always gonna stay that consistent. But even with a sixteen KW solar system, this person would still, um, basically be five thousand kilowatt hours shy of erasing their bill. And then I took their max peak right there, um, in July, and times about a hundred and ten percent, which is sixteen point eight two five. So that's the max that their, that solar system would be able to, to be sized. Um, and then I just did that same calculation for a five KW system, is about eleven thousand five hundred kilowatt hours per year. So you can see that they would, they would reduce about a quarter of their usage by a five KW system, but they, they don't see the same benefit as a smaller. As you scroll up a little bit more down, I think I have up the other way, sorry, down, I guess. So, yeah, sixteen point two four KW AC, which would fit under this hundred and ten percent times their twelve month peak. Um, so originally we kinda started at five KW because we weren't really sure how it was gonna affect our system or anything, and as we, I think we have almost twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four customers now on solar, and, uh, I mean, it seems to be fine on our end. I, I haven't talked to a lot of the solar customers, see if they really, or, you know, realizing much benefit. Um, really, a lot of times with solar, you're basically just replacing who you're paying. You're paying a solar payment, or you're paying Parowan City. Um, but I think it's good to have a cap, because I have seen, um, customers come in and try to be sold like an eight or ten KW system when they really need a three KW. And they're just unhappy at that point, because, you know, they're, I mean, you, comes in with like a thirty or forty thousand dollar solar system when you could've bought power from us for thirty years at that, and your panel's gonna be obsolete. So, I think having a cap and then having a way to, to kinda, uh, direct it towards their usage makes a lot of sense, it protects the customer, protects us. So, that is kinda the power board recommendation, is that first, um, attachment, Dan, that I went over. If there's any questions or concerns?
I think this will really help the solar customers, especially with the bigger houses.
Yeah, it gives them an option to look at solar. I mean, I don't, I don't know what all the, you know, if they all the time benefit from it. But with our, with our rates staying pretty consistent over the next few years, I, I don't know if there's a huge benefit with, with solar installs, but.
And the larger, on the case by case, on the larger, basically they're gonna need to show that they have the demand for it. We don't wanna backfeed and hurt the transformers is the whole point, right?
Right.
You probably said that, and I.
No, I didn't, that's a good point. Yeah, if they're already using a fifteen KW peak on their house or sixteen, whatever it be, then we know our transformer's good for that, so we don't wanna put a thirty KW system on. But, naturally then we changed it, I have, we, we talked about maybe changing the way that it's billed, but I talked to the, the company that did our rate study, and he's like, you know, the way your rates are designed, is like, I think you're, you're pretty in line with where you need to be on the how you bill it. There's a couple different methods to do net metering or, or, uh, delivered and received kilowatt hour billing, but they said I wouldn't bother with it at this time, the way your rates are designed.
The only other thing that you didn't say was, most cities have adjusted theirs up after we've had time to live and see what these look like. Of all the examples that you showed, most of them were.
Yeah, I didn't bring the examples to council, I mean, but we looked at Ephraim, Washington, St. George Hurricane, um, Lehigh, and they were all, mostly, Ephraim was at five KW, everybody else was above that. And I think it makes sense with larger homes, larger usage.
Alright, does the council have any other questions for Jeremy?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I think this was on action, I don't know if we needed to be on work or action, but.
We put it on action just because it had already gone to power board, and we had two of our commi- council members that were there, so unless there's a reason to table it, the other council wants to think about it. We figured it would be ready to go to action.
It's a possible action, so it would be up to you to either table it or make a motion.
I'll make a motion to change the net metering policy as Jeremy presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries, thank you. Um, we're now moving to a Zoom with our fire chief.
And it, there was a distinct possibility that he may or may not be able to get on.
He was on.
He was on, but he's, but there was a distinct possibility that he may have to get off.
Oh.
Um, he is literally on call, he's probably on a scene right now. Um, as everybody remembers, he works about four weeks a month, and today he landed on one of the, I mean, four days a month, and today's one of the days he's on call, or he's, uh, he's at his job.
Four weeks a month.
So, um, I told him if that happened, we'd probably table the item to later in the, in the evening to see if he could get back on.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I've been getting calls about what the policy's gonna be this year, and so.
And if he doesn't get on, like, we don't wanna leave the meeting without announcing what we're doing. I've been working with him, so I can, I can sum up what he's, what he would like to do, and we can have any conversation. So, I'd say we just put it at the end of the action agenda and see if he can make it back on.
Alright. So, a motion to move that item to later in the meeting, probably at the end of the work agenda, and give him some time to come back.
Mayor, I make a motion to move action item number eighteen to the end of the meeting.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, that motion carries. We're going to move now to item nineteen, this is a, an approval of the amendments to Appendix A, and this is the changes to the sign guidelines and approval process. It's ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen, and Dan is going to be presenting it, unless Kristen wants to present it.
Well, we had a full presentation last time in discussion, we just carried it forward to action.
Nothing really more to add to that.
It was changing one sentence to give the, more flexibility to the historic preservation just to approve what they like when it comes to signage. That sum it up? Give me a thumbs up, Kristen, Keith?
It was the ten percent of the frontage to not have that ten percent be there, because ten percent of available frontage is a tiny little sliver for most of these buildings that have glass front, glass storefronts. So just a motion to approve that, and we'll do a roll call vote on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Appendix A, isn't that the one?
Yep.
Uh, changes to side guidelines and approval process, ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen.
I'll second that.
Alright, we'll do roll call, starting with council member Downey.
Sharon Downey, aye.
John Dean, aye.
David Harris, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
Alright, thank you, that motion carries, and thank you for your hard work on that. That was something that needed to be done, and I'm glad that we got it, um, approved tonight. Item number twenty is the formation of the America Two Fifty Committee, and it will be a vote on member selection, and Dan Justin will lead this discussion.
Um, so we talked about this last time, and we approved the resolution to create the Parowan Two Fifty Committee. Now we just need to formulate a committee. I don't, somebody asked me, do we, do, do we have names to approve? We don't, we just need to spitball and say who would like to be on the committee, and, and it doesn't have to be a large committee. Basically, there's gonna be some activities that we do. The mayor and I both sit on the county committee, and we have already been spitballing with some ideas. Um, my thought is we probably oughta have Jet, our events person, on the committee, and a council member or two, and I, I know maybe the mayor would like to be on, I don't know. We just need to form the committee and that's all.
And a nice thing is a lot of the things we already do are in alignment with the kinds of events they'd like to have. Um, they just want an agenda of the events that we're doing, and then also, um, we wanna do an essay contest, and so we're gonna probably be approaching the school with either a countywide essay contest, but we were even told that Congress, a person, a lawyer, would read it on the floor. but we were even told that Congress, a person Malloy would read it on the floor, the winner, maybe bring the winner out and it'd be a really, um, big deal to do that and get involved in that. So there's a lot of opportunity for some things. We talked about maybe doing, uh, red, white and blue quilts or pictures of the flag and maybe raising an additional number of flags around town because so many people are putting up flags but make a goal of a certain number of flags. I mean, obviously two hundred and fifty would be aggressive, but maybe it's twenty, maybe it's twenty-five, you know, maybe it's two hundred and fifty throughout the county. Uh, we also had ideas about doing two hundred and fifty acts of service and maybe having the kids get some kind of pin or something if they do accomplish that. It's, they have a whole year to do it and they would just need to log it. And so those are, that's the spitballing. I just thought I would kinda give some examples to get everybody thinking.
We might do a big, larger event if, if we have enough time to plan it. A big two, two fifty event next July, something bigger than we normally do on the fourth or something like that, which is why Jett has to be involved for sure.
But two of the requirements to get a fifteen hundred dollar stipend, I guess it's kind of a grant, um, which was to design a red, white and blue logo and then to create this committee.
Did you mention the banners? We're probably gonna do the banners on Main Street.
Um, the banners that are already on Main Street to change those out and have those be the America Two Fifty as well.
This'll be an entire year of doing different things and so.
What kind of banners are you gonna put up, do you know? Are you gonna use this year with?
We were thinking the logo and then some just state presidential quotes, things like that, just some really solid, good quotes. That's what, um, Peter's doing, we're gonna come up with our own, just education as part of it. The things that'll be lost if.
Patriotic, but not political, right? Not political, but patriotic.
So are you saying that basically we would say it would be Jett, maybe two council members, whoever might be interested in doing that?
We have somebody here that wants to volunteer.
There's another community member that you immediately go, it should definitely include this person who would wanna get behind this and help with this.
I'll volunteer to be on it.
Same, thank you. All right.
Can I do it as well?
Yes, no. And then anyone else that just stands out? I mean, obviously we have to ask them, but we'd be probably fine with the four of us and anyone we wanted to could kinda just start coming. I mean, these are just the official that we'd turn in with the paperwork.
You could, you could volunteer, um, Jamie Evans.
Yeah.
Because we want to have the fair try to do some theming around that too, if they can still work it in.
That's a good idea, Jamie.
You think Jamie would do it?
I think she would, she seemed excited.
She can always tell us no.
Yeah, she can say no.
And she's fun.
I like your volunteer.
Are you saying we have to be fun?
Yes.
Do you know I'm the Fun Squad?
We gotta put some fun back into America, come on now.
All right, so with that, a motion to approve, um, those people and obviously Jamie can opt out, but just to be able to get that through and get that going.
I'll make a motion to approve the formation of America Two Fifty Committee. Join me to say, the two of us, Rochelle Topham and Sharon Downey on the committee as far as council representative.
And then who else?
Molly.
Jett.
The mayor, Ma- Molly Halderman, Dan Jensen, city manager, Jett Smith, event center and.
Jamie Evans.
Jamie Evans.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, that motion carries. Now a similar kind of item, we're forming the Rise Incentive Committee. Um, this would be the members who would be involved in the incentive program and we need to do a member selection on that as well.
And this one, I think I just wanted to say, so when we adopted our program, we, we actually said how we were going to comprise this and I'm trying to find my notes on this. Um, here it is, okay, twenty twenty-five. Um, I, my thoughts were, um, we, we should definitely follow what we were planning on doing, but we were going to have the mayor, a city council member, one supervisor, one regular employee that's not a supervisor and a chosen member from the community appointed by the mayor. Um, I think that I would like to have the, the two employees, the one that's a supervisor and the one that isn't, be anonymous on the committee.
I agree.
For the reason that they will be.
I would agree.
Putting, putting, um, because this committee's gonna be reviewing the, um, the, the results of the performance evaluations and, and what was done and then essentially making a decision and assigning how much of that incentive bonus will be given to that employee. I don't want the other employees to know, oh, it's this person. And A, be mad at them their bonus wasn't high or feel like they need to sweet talk them or bring them donuts or, I don't want any of that going on. I want somebody who can be fair minded that maybe the, maybe the council could leave it up to the mayor to make that appointment and the council can know who it is, but I just don't want it to be, I want it to be anonymous, as I thought about it. And for that matter, maybe the whole committee should be anonymous if, as long as they ca- I mean, I don't know, maybe we, maybe we talk about that in a closed session, I don't know. Or maybe e- everybody else is not anonymous, but we're, we're gonna have a community member on there. Do you want that community member to be like, I don't know, I ju- I just got thinking about it and I thought, oh, I didn't really think about that, that could be a problem, so what are your thoughts?
And I've been thinking that as well, is like, that was my first gut feeling is why if we are gonna have, like, the whole community, committee should just be anonymous. We should, like, as council, we can know who's on it, but as far as the employees and everybody else. Because I can, I could potentially see.
There will be cross feelings if I felt like, because this year, if you're a full-time employee, there's a maximum of three hundred dollars. Um, and the whole idea was that we want to incentivize certain behavior and we want to, we wanna really reward those star performers and if they're not a star performer and they're just dragging bottom and doing the bare minimum, they're gonna get probably not much more than what a Christmas bonus used to be. Um, I don't want that person who gets that not a lot because they're really not doing much. I don't want them to have, you know, feelings, you know? And, I mean, they need to be thinking about, what can I do next year to actually bring value to the city? Not thinking, those dirty rats don't like me, this is rigged, you know what I'm saying?
And I'm gonna butt in, there isn't anyone that's not doing much, so I take offense to that.
No, I'm just going the far extreme edges of what possibilities are.
But I hear what you're saying. And so, I mean, this has been three, three years in the works to get this evaluation program, to have an employee incentive program, things like that. So I understand that it's sensitive as far as like, well, I need to be sure that they like me or they obviously don't like me, we don't want any of that being a concern. It's more that, oh, you figured out how to do that so much more efficiently and that saved the city thousands of dollars and we want to recognize you and say, that was great that you did that and keep everyone kinda thinking innovatively and being excited about coming to work and the things that get us all, you know, uh, are, just keeps the morale, you know, kinda popping. And I'm sorry, I, I offended is the wrong word, I didn't mean, if I hurt your feelings, but.
I don't know.
Um, but anyway, that, that's where I'm at. I don't know if we can, so are we going to make a motion and vote that these would be anonymous members? I mean, that's also kinda maybe a little bit.
So the evaluations, um, will, will be wrapped up by the end of June. The, the actual payment will happen in December. So the, the committee will be meeting, reviewing the results of the evaluations, having any follow-up questions with the supervisor. Um, so, I mean, it's not like it has to be done tonight. We just, we just, we gotta form a committee and we'll probably ha- have the committee meet September or something like that, review things.
Can we just make it where the mayor and yourself makes the decisions on, you know, makes the decision who's on the committee?
Yeah, and the committee could, it doesn't have to be the same forever. I mean, there could be, you know, result.
Right.
Revol- revolving people on and off or something like that, but. I mean, I think the council needs to be aware of who the committee is, but I just don't think everybody should.
No, what I'm saying is we can just leave it up to the mayor and you to make those choices and then you could tell us if that's what you wanted to do, if it was.
I think that's, that's fair, yeah. Because, because you, you could talk about it in closed session, you just can't take action in closed session, so it doesn't do any good.
Right. So the mo- do you have a motion formulated?
I'll make a motion in the formation of the Rise Incentive Committee and vote that the mayor and city manager will, will make the choices.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Oh, there you are. Okay, so we have four ayes and the motion carries. Um, we'll now move out of our action agenda and do our work agenda. These are items that are just up for discussion, we won't be voting on them this evening. Um, number twenty-two, and sorry for those of you who waited the whole night for this one, um, it's a discussion on the Meeks Pond and Meeks Cabin Historical Park.
Okay, so, um, this was brought up in public comments. This is bigger, a bigger conversation than just the fire, but the fire has, that we had at Meeks has definitely brought this to the forefront. Um, for those that are not aware, and of course the satellite image isn't gonna show the fire, but we had a fire that was, that was ignited. Um, there's been a lot of large words thrown around like arson. Um, the, the cause of the fire is, is unknown. We do know that there was kids in the area ahead of the time. The fire started at night, it was like midnight or something like that. Uh, the, the fire department responded and, and got it out and we're so grateful. It was, um, close to a home and it burned right up next to the barn, um, and threatened the barn. It did burn in through the, um, what do we call it, the upper arboreum, Kristen? It burned through there where we have implements. Um, most of the implements are like cast, cast iron, there's some signs. Um, and frankly, you couldn't even go in there before hardly without, without a machete to cut your way through. And so, um, wh- what this fire did, it was expose, um, really the issue that, that we've been battling, um, um, for years. Um, and that is the, how to fund, how to maintain, how to, um, how to do what we need to do in Meeks, um, in the whole Meeks area. Um, as far as addressing the fire itself, um, we, we are, we've done some mowing along the road there. We need to get in and, and do additional mowing work. Um, there's been lots of, lots of comments. Um, somebody wrote a letter to the State Historical Society and said that the city is, you know, has ruined the, the park and that the structures were burned down and things like that. So of course they're, they're asking us what's going on and we're telling them, no, we didn't lose any structures. Um, interestingly enough, the conversation we didn't have with the fire chief yet, um, we're gonna talk about maintenance of, of fields and open spaces that have, um, dry grasses and things. Um, w- 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 I can, I can summarize this, that if we were to go into everything that needs to be discussed about Meeks Park, we could be here for four hours and would have a roomful of people with very strong opinions. Um, what I can say is, is what we're currently doing is, is not working. Um, this is a, this is a major undertaking, just to do maintenance on this thing with the restrictions the city has on it due to the conservation easement, the MOUs and the agreements. So, um, A, we, we are addressing and will be addressing the, um, the dry grass and things like that. But if you look at the master plan, the master plan has a, a good chunk of this area in original, um, native format, including grasses and things like that. I, I mean, if this thing is done perfect, it's gonna have dry grass in it. It has, and, and, and I can go into a, a lot of documents to show what th- those agreements are. Like I said, we can talk about this as much as the council wants to talk about tonight. Um, we did invite Kristen here, she, she works for the Heritage Foundation. Kristen puts tons of time and effort into, into doing the things that the Heritage Foundation, um, is still committed to working on with the, the, the Meeks Cabin. Gratefully, the Meeks Cabin is surrounded by a nice luscious lawn that's maintained and all of that stuff. The cabin was never threatened, the barn was. Um, and, um, there's, there is an original grant that was given the land to the city. There was a, a deed of conservation easement where the city is the grantor and the Heritage Foundation is the grantee. Um, the school district used to be a large partner with us in this thing and it was an outdoor classroom. Acres, an acres of this was meant to be managed and worked with by the school district as they managed the arboreum and they managed the outdoor classroom and, and so forth. And, um, the school district has pulled out and said, we're no longer, um, going to be involved in Meeks. Um, you're on your own. They didn't say you're on your own, but they said there's not, um, their priority, they, and they can't, um.
There isn't a curriculum for it.
There isn't a curriculum for it anymore. Um, there was a master plan that was created in twenty fifteen. Um, this is a summary of that. This is the, the different items of, of the Meeks Pond Park and I can pull up different maps that were done and, and whose responsibility. Um, the Heritage Foundation was, was, was over the Meeks Cabin itself and they're doing a very fine job there. It talks a lot about the barn, although it doesn't have a responsibility next to it specifically or a contact person. It says what it's gonna be used for, what's gonna be stored in it. Um, it talks a lot about fences. Again, there's no, there's no name or responsibility or contact by the, by the fences. The ag plot, which is part of that outdoor classroom, was something the school district was supposed to maintain. Uh, the nursery, potting area and work area were supposed to be maintained by the city shade tree committee. Um, I wanna point out, the shade tree committee and the Heritage Foundation are entirely volunteers and we know sometimes volunteers get really excited and go and sometimes they, they struggle to keep up or it ends up on one person's shoulders and, and, and that's obviously not very fair. The pond and stream, which is an urban fishery, um, is a, is a combined, um, agreement that we have, uh, with the state DWR. And that agreement was for the establishment of it and then ongoing maintenance. And the state gave us funding and the state has been a great partner. I think the fishery is one of the things that is a, still a, a very resounding success of that park. Um, the state stocks it every year. Um, the, uh, it's mentioned in that master plan that the water co-op is for water. That just basically means the, the reservoir company, um, water comes from the reservoir company with a water right that the city has. Um, that, there has to be correlation there so that we can continue to get fresh water into the, into the park and we work with the reservoir company to do that. That takes coordination. Um, and then of course the city to, um, do signage and to do maintenance and things of the pond, which, which we have, um, definitely done the signage, maintenance comes and goes. Um, the city is responsible for the trails, toilet out overlook and water lines. I'll send all the historical documents to the council so you guys can read through this stuff and get up to speed. The orchard is supposed to be, um, taken care of and managed by the school district. Um, and they used to have, they would plant trees and they would raise them in the greenhouses. The greenhouses, of course, are getting torn out with the new fieldhouse and then they would go plant the trees and then go maintain the trees and teach, and teach a class around that. And the arboreum was a shade tree committee. The biomes and outdoor classroom was the school district. Of the entire acreage, one acre was dedicated to the fishery, two acres to the out, to outdoor learning and point six one acres to historical preservation. That is a very, 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 very quick and short deal with the master plan. Um, then in twenty-two, there was a big group that got together. Of course, the, the fish pond was full of sediment and there was a whole bunch of work done. Um, Linda Smith did a whole bunch of work, uh, in and around the trees and the trade tree committee. Uh, the, of course, the, the city dredged the pond, um, there was a whole bunch of work done. Um, I, you can't talk about Meeks without giving a lot of credit to Ron Roth. Ron Roth has done a lot of work to try to reestablish some of the native grasses and wildflowers and all of that. I will say openly in the mic, there has been friction there. Um, as far as the vision of what that should be and what the city should do and the city shouldn't do. Um, and frankly, we're gonna have to work through some friction. We're gonna have to work through some difference of opinions. But where do we go from here? Um, to maintain this park in the way that it was originally designed? There's several different, um, maps of how that's supposed to be laid out. Oh, this right here tells you, um, in section one, we have, these are the plants. Wildflowers, high plains, foothills grasses, we all know those dry out. Short grass and prairie wildflowers and short grass prairie grasses in two. Three is pinion juniper gla- grasses and wildflowers. Um, high desert wildflowers and grasses in section four. Sage camp country wildflower and sage country grasses in five. Montane grass mix in six, high altitude grass mix in seven. Um, in eight, we have mountain wet meadow mix, that's right down by the pond. And in nine is the only real planned zero escaping. In nine, which is up by the barn. And in ten, we have wildflowers, and in eleven, we have Utah natives. Um, so, back to the fire discussion, even if this thing is, is developed and maintained, um, by the way, you're going to be hand weeding that type of stuff. You can't go in and, and have all of those types of things right and then maintain this at a, at a, the way you would with a, with a large field or a large park, right? With a pull behind mower and just go through it and then hit it with a weedie around the edges. To maintain something like this, the way it was designed, um, we were talking to Cedar City, um, not Cedar City Corporation, but the, um, the, what do you call it, the heritage?
Utah State, um, college person Candace Shi- Shival, and she said for something like this, it would take two full-time employees ten times as many hours as what it takes them to maintain their native plants by decor works and cedar. She's like, this is a huge project if you want to maintain it at this level.
And that doesn't really even cover the things that were supposed to be managed by the city. The crops, the orchard, the farm machinery. Um, the last thing I want to do is establish blame. I know the public wants to establish blame. What I'm trying to say is, where do we go from here? Do we want to, um, do we want to try to fund that and the maintenance of that? Because you're talking about a lot of money, operational money.
Well, fifteen years ago, when this was written up, or ten years ago, uh, their budget, they suggested to be forty thousand a year just for the shade tree committee for that Meeks Pond.
For their portion of it.
Yeah. And right now, you know, you, you, oh, I try, hopefully I won't get in trouble. Um, so what's interesting is, y- y- you've read all those, those wild grasses and, um, and plants, um, and all those grow in the wild, and, and Meeks Pond, uh, isn't cer- it's in the middle of the city or middle of our town. Uh, so, um, they're taking culinary water and watering this field. And, and not a horticulture major or anything, but I, I walked it after the fire and, and I absolutely didn't see anything out there that, that resembles flowers, except for a few flowers around trees that still have to be maintained. The trees should be maintained, um, but that field is, is just a field. You know, I just, I walk behind, you know, my five acres behind my house, and it's just a field. And, uh, so, and, yeah, there is... Better not go there, so, that's it. But, yeah.
Besides the trees, is it just dry grass out there? I mean, I, I drove by.
So, Ron, and again, kudos to Ron. Um, Ron spearheaded the planting of native, native grasses and flowers. Wildflowers got a mix, worked with, worked with WHO to try to get that. And it was, it was a mix that was applied to that whole area.
Whole thing.
It wasn't all the different ones in all the different sections with, you know, gravel paths and all that stuff. It was just an attempt to get that done. And the original, w- we met on this in twenty twenty-four. You remember that, Kristen? And the plan was, let's at least plant that, and the city will mow that once a year, and, and, and there'll be perennials that they'll come back, we'll, we'll mow them down and they'll come back. And to try to keep it from getting too outlandish, the shade tree committee doubled down. Yep, we'll get in there, and they did. Um, but that didn't answer what we're doing with the arboreum and, and the, um, a- a- all the other areas that were dedicated for the school to do things. It's like, let's just try to keep this thing manageable while we come up with a long-term plan. We were thinking before twenty thirty, which is when the easement expired, so we thought. And then we can have a long-term plan and figure out where this thing is headed. So, as I reread this, the conservation easement that the city gave to historic, the city was the, was the, um, oh, what do you call it? The grantor to the historic, um, foundation. Sorry, there's a lot, I have a lot of historic documents. That's a forty-year agreement that's, that was signed in two thousand. And the Heritage Foundation has said that really they would like to focus on the historical buildings and, and not, not have, you know, all of that stuff. So, I guess the question is, is, there's a couple of options. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but I think we should form a committee. We should have our attorney look into if, if we want to pursue a different thing that would be in conflict with our MOU, in conflict with the deed easement, conservation easement restriction, in conflict with any other agreements, how do we go about that? Do we bring those parties back to the table and ask to renegotiate them? And so, there's, that's one aspect of it. But the, the other aspect of it, what I care more about, I mean, I care about the legal side of it. That has to be done, but I care about what is the actual plan? And if we are going to keep this thing native, so, one, one, one idea is that you could turn it into a, not all of it, but a, the bulk of the, of the acreage into something that the city can manage. Like actually put grass in, put some benches and some paths so that we can go in like we do all of our other parks, bring a big mower in, mow the whole thing, go through and weed eat and things like that. We hit that thing every week, every other week like we do our other parks. That's something we can manage. Or do we say we absolutely, that was not what it was intended for? It was intended to be native and all, and all this stuff? Fine. It's still got to be something we can maintain without adding staff. Or option three, we do a tax increase, we fund the people and the, the property and the improvements that we need to do, and we put all of those things into the plan, and we have onsite all the equipment and the people to do all that stuff. So, there's different options, but we need to talk through them. We need probably have a committee look at it. Um...
So, are you telling me on the other, the other side of the street, Kristen? On the other street by the houses, is that all the native grass that looks like weeds?
It would be the west side of Meeks Pond.
Like over by Cindy and Mary's houses or more?
Yeah.
Oh, s- let, let me pull up this. Are you talking about this area?
Isn't that somebody's?
This area is private property. There's two parcels that...
That doesn't have anything to do with it.
And tha- and they need to, they need to go in and knock the weeds down.
They do.
I always thought that was part of it.
Nope, nope. And that'll be a code enforcement thing. We'll talk about that when we get our fire chief back on.
Okay.
That all needs to be knocked down.
I wasn't going to mention that, that, uh, just because Cindy's here, but, um, th- th- that has to be a priority. There's, there's homes on both sides of this, you know, on the other side of the street and then adjoining that.
Yep.
Um, and, yeah, it's, uh...
I was hoping we would have that discussion already resolved so we could say that, what we're doing applies to that.
I mean, that should, hopefully that's done before Fourth of July. I mean, the on- the owner needs to take responsibility.
I wonder if, I guess we can look it up on the GSI.
Then, that needs to be taken.
I was about to call you up, Justin, and then I thought, does he want to come up? But, yeah, you would be great because you were there that day that we walked it a few years ago, and you were, you had a lot to say.
With the meetings and everything. I was there when the fire happened, um, so, I, I can talk about both of it. For like the maintenance part and everything, um, for me and my guys to come through, right now, it's a mess. I mean, everybody knows that. And it's hours, weeks of non-stop work for us to get that up to par to what we want. Um, and then the fire part, um, it was at midnight. Midnight, humidity's up, everything's, you know, cooled down, but that fire burnt really well. Um, luckily, we were able to get ahead of the fire and put it out before it jumped the creek. It would have jumped the creek. It was hot enough, it would have, it would have made it to the pond easily. Um, and, uh, but luckily, we have good crew and everything like that. We were able to put it out, but, um, like you guys are talking, we got to do something different. Um, I did go in there and mow a whole bunch of grass, um, down around the barn and, um, along the streets and, but there's still a lot that needs to be mowed. There's, there's a lot, and so...
Alan, looks like he'll be able to jump on in just a second, so, um, he can, he can add any, any color to that conversation as well.
Is there any questions?
Justin, we're far out from this, but, because I think we really need to form a committee. We need to bring shareholders to the table and, um, take, take a minute of time. Obviously, we got to have the fire risk mitigated, but, but long-term, um, you've said to me many times, man, there's tons of things I'd like to do in there, things that we could get in, we could manage it better and all that stuff.
Yeah.
You have a Reader's Digest version of just an i- uh, an idea, a concept? I, I, I've never even really heard what you want to do.
Like what, like, honestly, what I would really like to do is, like you said, um, put grass in there, have a pavilion where people can hang out under the pavilion, um, maybe even a little bathroom. Um, I know that we're, we have the project going where we're going to, um, the diversion. We're going to put pipe in the ground and, uh, around the pond. Um, I'd like to put that where the diversion is. I'd like to put that in grass so people can sit on that bank that's going to be the south end of where the pond is, um, and they can fish right off the bank. Right now, you can't do that. It's, it's just way too overgrown. Um, um, actually, people have cut places so they can go in there and fish. Um, so I would like to have it so you can go in there, sit on the lawn if you'd like, fish, do whatever if you wanted to. You could go over on the other side, have a family event. You could, I mean, it's, there's so much that you could do. And then up where the barn is and everything like that, you could get your orchard back. You could clean up the trails really good, going from the cabin to the pond. I mean, there's... If you guys told me to go and do it, I could, uh, it'd be kind, it would be a fun project. It really would, um, with the creek there and everything like that.
What about this large area?
I'd do it all in grass. I would. Um, but you could also run with, like, your idea, um, have a spot where it is native, you know, little sections where, yeah, this is some wildflowers, this is...
I mean, you're going to have to hand weed that stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, you would.
Could you put more picnic tables over there in that area? You only have the one now, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you could.
More of that and take up more space from grass.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I mean, obviously, there's going to be as many people involved, their idea of what the optimal thing is there, but...
Are there breeds and varieties of grass that are more heritage types that don't take as much water but would still kind of offer a kind of look and feel of that without it being a higher water usage grass?
Was the intent to, to put in irrigation for those grasses or was the intent that they were native? They just live because it's the desert or what? Do you, do we know?
I think so. I, I don't know.
Not a horticultur- to- ho- horticulturist either. Native would be a bunch of sagebrush.
Yeah.
An opinion.
Yeah. And now we, I mean, now we've got a lot of goat heads out there.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying is, you know, treating for the goat heads. I know that a lot of people don't like the idea of that, but I, there is, you get a bike out there and your tires are gone immediately.
Yeah. Um, and not only that, but, um, like this year, within as dry as it is, um, you got snakes now. Um, I would never let my kids walk out in there.
Out there we'd...
No way.
So many snakes when we were painting the bridge.
Yeah.
There were so many.
The, you know, they're...
It's the environment. It's their home.
Yeah.
The natural environment, habitat.
They got the creek right there, there, yeah, it's everything they'd ever want, right there.
They're living their best life.
But...
We, 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 we want to have this be an incredible place. We, we, it, we just need to do something. If this is going to be, the reality of it is, the way it's shaping up with where we're at today, the city's going to have to take on the bulk of this work with the Heritage Foundation doing the piece that it's willing to do, the, the fishery being assisted with, with, uh, with DWR. We just need something that is manageable.
And I think that that relationship with Richard Howard is still really good for the fish part. I mean, as long as we keep the ducks off of it, that was the requirement there. So, that is a piece that we can count on, I think, into the future.
And, and it's dredged, it's deeper, the fish can live.
Yep.
Um, we work with the reservoir company to put water in there periodically through the summer. And then, of course, it runs year round, or it runs around the clock during the winter.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we have a good working relationship with the reservoir company. They say, hey, if, 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 if the water levels have dropped or if it needs to be refreshed and, and we haven't done it, because they'll do it automatically during cutting time, it, whenever there's any flow, the way their system works, it'll back up and it'll flow down through there. If the city needs to put water in there because evaporation is getting away from us or something, we make a call, they shut down enough of their lines that it'll back up. There just needs to be enough to freshen the water through the summer. That's all our water idea is anyways, is just to keep the level at a certain level.
Yeah. And I think, uh, an aerator would be a really good idea to put in there, just to help it.
Would love to put an aerator. We, we may, we've talked about, you know, should we hook it into our culinary so we could put water into it that way? Or should, should we put it into PI so we could put water into it that way? That's, that would be using water that wasn't intended for the purpose when we have water that, a water right. So, we go around all these ways. It's like, let's just solve that problem. And it's like, we feel like we're kind of hamstrung from operating this thing the way we'd like to.
Yeah. But to go back to the fire, um, the way that it pushed through there, that late at night, um, that, yeah, that was, uh, it was quite the deal. Like, that's, that's a midday, you know, like what it should have been, midday, so...
Well, and we'll, and now we have Alan on, we'll transition to that right after this i- item.
The other thing I was going to say is, I know like indigenous plants and pathways and trails and maybe just some specific area for grass. I mean, just again, to have something that's low, lower maintenance, and we've seen versions of it. I don't know what field trip I went with my kids on a few different times where we went through that park where it was rocks and indigenous plants, and it tells you what's good to grow and why it's good to grow. And they do take a lot less water and maintenance. But then to include some grassy areas, but maybe not think about, you know, so much grass. It's kind of, I mean, and I know that, I'm excited that you're excited because I, I know when we've talked about it, you've just been like, ah, because it is just so overwhelming as it sits.
Well, and as far as like the irrigation part and everything like that, I can put certain sprinklers in that don't use a lot of water but do a really good job of keeping everything green. So, it's just, yeah, it's just designing it right and making it how you guys want it, you know. We, I, we can do it.
Well, and I like the shareholders' idea. There are a lot of people very vested and very a- a- attached to this project overall that I think would definitely be collaborative at this point.
But I really want to see not, I want to see a solution that's future-proof. When volunteerism wanes as it does, let's get, let's come up with a plan that's future-proof.
When, so when I was in school, in high school, um, I did a lot of work up there with Jim Sherlock, and I mean, lots and lots of hours of weeding and whatever he wanted to do, hours. Yeah. With Jim, yes. Yeah.
And we, I think, I think we're doing Jim a disservice for not bringing up all of the time that he spent.
Yeah.
This was his baby at the high school. The reason why the high school said we're out is because Jim retired.
Yeah.
And the curriculum changed. The, the school district won't let it happen. But I'm saying, we got to give Jim kudos, but that is another thing that has fundamentally shifted.
Yeah.
That was one of the reasons it worked to the degree it did.
Yeah. And it worked good.
Yeah.
Justin?
Yes.
I got one request.
Yeah.
When you come in, can you make sure you have your hat on so we know who you are?
Yeah, yeah. I can do that. Don't comb my hair.
My dad would say he's a, he's a court low. That's what my dad would say.
Thank you. And I don't know what Alan getting on if we wanted to bring up that we did send letters out about tall, dry grass, um...
So, let's wrap up this item and then let's...
All right, so, we will shift now.
But wait, wait, wait. So, what are we going to do? We're going to have the council review the documents, we're going to have our attorney review those documents, and then what?
Find out what we can legally do.
Form a committee, find out what we can legally do first.
And then make a committee.
Yeah, if we can legally form a committee, let's form a committee.
Well, we can form a committee.
Well, I say that...
Yes, part of it.
Already got part of the committee.
So maybe just bringing...
The first item of business has got to be to bring the parties back to the table.
Yep.
And...
Well, first item, fire mitigation, fuels mitigation, but we've gotta start working on this thing. This was, this was, this is us not letting a crisis go to waste, let's, let's get this thing solved, but... Okay, so everybody's on the same page?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Alan, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Hey, before we officially transition to fireworks and residents' responsibility maintaining weeds, is there anything you want to add about the Meeks Park discussion that we haven't already said?
So I just got back from a call, back to the station, and I came in about halfway through that discussion, but, but that was pretty alarming to me, how fast that fire was spreading and how, you know, those tall, dry grasses, it just, it's dangerous, so that, that's all I want to add to it, is that we get, get those things taken care of as fast as we can.
And there's a lot of speculation, did we, do we have any sort of resolution, or will we ever find out exactly what happened there?
We never will, what we found out was neighbors saw kids playing late at night, but there was, we, we had a good idea where the point of origin was, where that fire started, but there was no evidence of arson, no, you know, there was nothing there.
Okay, thanks, hey, give your guys kudos, um, we gotta give the fire department kudos for that, um, I don't know if everybody realizes, we had a fire, um, it was a state fire on state lands, or federal lands, BLM, of Bravix Canyon, two days ago. This is our nightmare scenario, um, Cedar responded, we responded, our fire chief and Tess...
Tessa.
Tessa, was that who was with you, just you and Tessa?
Yes, Tessa.
They were the first ones on scene with water and got that thing put out while it was still like thirty by thirty. That's our, that's our nightmare scenario, was a fire in the foothills with prevailing winds pushing it towards the city, um, so, kudos. I, I mean, really, really, really good job, um, we're gonna be talking a lot about fire, it's, I, I have a hunch it's gonna be, um, I mean, it's gonna be affecting our land use, it's gonna be affecting, um, our fire department, funding of the fire department, and training, um, our agreement with the state is being redone, um, and, and good, and it, we'd rather get ahead of it than, um, than have a major disaster and then say, and start pointing fingers, so, we're gonna be talking about it a lot, we got the right guy at the helm.
And even with the power, with Rocky Mountain Power, if they take the power down, I mean, it's not something to get upset about when we consider the point that they do that and how critical that is, do you want to speak to that, Jeremy, or do you want to let that, let that go? I mean, it was a big concern over the weekend, and we didn't get ours turned off, but Summit did, did Paragona?
No.
Okay, but I mean, when they de-charge, de...
Energize them.
De-energize, I mean, that isn't anything Parowan City can do anything about, and it's because of a severe extreme warning, ex- extreme conditions.
And by the way, de-energization is different than what we dealt with all last summer, what we dealt with last summer was enhanced fire settings, any little bump in the system would take the system down, Rocky Mountain has made the adjustments there, so that shouldn't happen to us this summer. But they can take down whatever they want, if humidity is high, winds are high, and temperatures are high. Humidity is low, everything else is high, and that was what we faced last weekend. That's, th- there's nothing we did, with, with all of our work with Rocky Mountain, takes away that risk, so, and, and they're trying to manage their risks, so it's important to understand that they're trying to, to manage it, we just can't afford to have them do it at the wrong time. And they also will do it when fire is encroaching upon their power lines, th- they're turning power off up, up in, um, Kane County right now, battling that fire by hatch, um, I talked to Panguitch manager yesterday, and they haven't turned Panguitch off, but, um, if they do, Panguitch has a generator on their well, by the way, and so, um, but they, they have the ability to do that, so, okay.
All right, so moving back to the item that we moved ahead, this is our twenty twenty-five firework policy and discussion on residents' responsibility in maintaining weeds on property, Chief Alan Cavallari is here, I don't know if we get to see him, or...
Let's talk, no, you wanna turn on your video, or do you wanna just be a ghost in the room? We can hear you.
That's sure.
There he is.
Look at that good-looking face. Um, let's talk fireworks first, Alan, um, we need to set our policy for this year, and, and we're gonna publish what we're doing to the public, we've been talking, you have some thoughts?
Yeah, we got, uh, I visited with the county today, and they gave us permission to light up fireworks in the fairgrounds parking lot, and I wa- I drove around all the, the different sites with Dan, and it's a good spot to be where there's no, you know, very little brush and grass that can catch on fire there, so I think that's a really good spot to have those fireworks.
We've always done it at Lyons Park, we di- we said never again, after last year, if everybody remembers, we had to pump the pool out, um, not to mention when you're putting fireworks on grass, it's unstable and they can tip over, and so we said never again at Lyons, we're pu- we're gonna do it in the gravel parking lot, in the, in the west parking lot, so the one that faces three hundred east of the fairgrounds, for, for the public.
Correct.
And, and the state allows us to do it for four nights, three days before and one day afterwards, do you have any thoughts on that? Do we feel comfortable? Some cities are just banning fireworks outright, so, anything we do is, is more lenient than that, but what are your thoughts on that, Chief?
Well, I'd like to see it just the one night, but that's not probably practical, so, you know...
If, I guess if the public can be responsible, three...
Yeah, yeah.
Those four nights are all that the state will allow, and it's, by the way, it's four nights before, and three nights before the fourth, one night after, and same with the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So are you good with that?
Well, would it make sense to just do the night of the fourth? Are we gonna have fire trucks on standby the night of the fourth? I know we've done that in the past, so, I mean, I'm comfortable with one night, I, I'm, that's where I'm at with it.
Me too.
Um, I don't know if any of the other council members have an opinion or have even thought about it, but I...
One night.
One night is fantastic, I mean, that's...
And by one night, you mean the fourth and then again on the twenty-fourth?
Right.
Right, with, with water.
Everything's too dry.
Yeah.
Yes, that's how I, I strongly feel.
Because the, the downside of not giving people a place is they'll still do it somewhere, and I'd rather them have a designated place to do it.
I agree.
You feel good about that, Chief? Does that sound good?
I do, that would be my preference, I'd love that.
And as far as the, the city fireworks, we are gonna do city fireworks, um, th- there, they've been ordered, have they been received?
They have.
Sweet, w- w- normally, we light those off where there's now a bike park, so, and the public needs to know where it is, so they can go watch it. Um, we were, we were thinking, Alan and I were driving, there's an area, a buffer between the, um, basically, instead of north of the, of the Valentine Peak, we were gonna light them off on the other side, on south of the, um, baseball fields, um, we don't actually have a lot of cheat grass, or there's, the, the weeds that are in there are still pretty green, um, if we need to, we could probably get in and knock down anything that looks kinda scary, um, but we'll probably light them off just, it's, it's basically between the racetrack and the baseball fields, there's a flat area there that we can, we can go and set up and light them off. The public can, they can still go sit on the soccer fields, they can sit all around there, they can park in the parking lots and watch them, and that's where we were thinking we'd light them off, and if that works good, we'll just use that location from here on out. It got mowed today, good, thank you, um, and I did inform the county that that's where we're gonna light them off from, and they're fine. Better be, because we gave them the fairgrounds. Anything else on that? Or we go to the next item?
All right.
Keith, you wanna come up while we talk about the other? I just want you to come up and feel part of the pain too, of, so, the city used to, um, and, and I don't know exactly when it stopped, again, not looking to point fingers, um, we used to be a lot more on top of enforcement of, um, weed nuisance, um, in regards to public safety, and, um, we had an, we had a system administratively where we had some way to monitor that, send out letters, and, and encourage people to stay on top of that, um, that has fallen by the wayside, I don't know when the last time that's happened, but it's pretty typical for cities, especially in the southwest, it's dry, to, um, to enforce that, and so, um, we've had a lot of people asking, you know, when is the city gonna enforce that? Of course, again, the Meeks was a little bit of a reminder, and, um, luckily, it was a low-cost reminder from, from a property damage standpoint, but, um, we're, we're, we're getting back on that, we're doubling down on that, um, we have the authority to do code enforcement from a nuisance standpoint. To take legal action is quite, um, is, is, is a little bit of a process, so we're starting from the, um, let's send out a, um, letter, uh, the city council, the mayor, everybody said, I'll take a section of town, we have mapped out the town that has areas, we do know that there's areas that is in city right-of-way that the city, and we, the city mows every year, and, and we're on that, we'll work on the, the right-of-ways, UDOT mows in, on the UDOT right-of-ways in town, uh, David Burton Junior does that really good job. Now's the time to hit it, so this, you're gonna see the city mowing, and, um, UDOT mowing, and we're gonna send out letters, what are we calling them?
Courtesy letters.
Courtesy letters, saying, please do this, before we have to send out more, um, scrutinized letters. We, 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 we have to send a certified letter if we're officially doing code enforcement, so we're hoping that courtesy letters take out ninety-five percent of the, and usually, that's the way it works with percentages, ninety-five percent of people just need a reminder, sometimes these people don't live in town, and they just own property, it's a bare lot, and a courtesy reminder that says, hey, you needed to get this taken care of, the next letter isn't gonna be as nice, and then most people will go, oh, dang it, and hire somebody, and they'll go do it. So that's what we're doing, and then, um, we'll reassess, and then we'll send out more intense letters, um, including eventually fines, and eventually, if the city has to step in and do it and bill them, we will. What other thoughts you got there, Keith?
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, with the help of others, we addressed ninety-two letters, um, to various lots throughout the town, with an eye really on, just on non-native overgrowth lots, lots that have some native, especially sagebrush and stuff like that, uh, were left alone and not, not addressed, simply because if they go and tear that stuff down, what's gonna grow is non-native, and is gonna be...
We're worried about dry grass.
Dry grass, yeah.
Weeds, dry grass, if it's a, if it's a filled and it's got some sagebrush in it and things like that, it's not nearly as explosive as the dry grasses.
Right.
And not only that, I mean, we're, we are in the middle of, there's sagebrush dry, we're surrounded by it.
Sure.
Um, and we would love to have all of that mitigated, but it's one thing to mitigate a, a lot that's right next to a house, it's another thing to take care of ten acres, which is still basically ag, and there's nothing to burn, and if we have a fire out there, it's gonna be more of a brush fire, um, response.
Yes.
It's, it's when it's right next to structures that can burn and it's explosive, those are the areas we're focusing on. You feel good about that, Chief? I mean, I mean...
I do, I appreciate everybody's efforts in that, we had a gentleman stop by the fire station the other day who, that kinda spurred this conversation with Dan and myself, and it's, it's dangerous when those grasses get right next to a fence and to a house, because it goes, it, it's a matter of minutes by the time, you know, if we don't get there and get those, those fires out, it'll, it'll spread the structures and really cause havoc, so, I'm, I'm so glad to see these letters going out, I hope people respond really well to them.
We're doing the best we can in the middle of the season right now to get everybody's heads wrapped around that, we'll be more proactive in the years to come, uh, to make sure that, uh, everybody's thinking about fire safety and being considerate.
And I think, I think the way to get ahead of this, in a, in, to be better at this, is long about April, when stuff is growing, send a reminder, um, the best time is right, when it's starting to dry out, to actually get in and mitigate it, because you get too early and then it just grows after it, and then you're hitting it again, you'll notice when the, when the state does its mowing, and when the city does its mowing, it's just right as it's turning from wet and starting to dry out, that's usually the best time to get in and knock it down, so... We wanna have our messaging out with the newsletter and things like that to remind people, and then, immediately after that, when it, when it's like, okay, there's actually now some areas that are being neglected, that's when we wanna send letters, and so, we'll, we're committed to, to reviving the city's, um, approach on this, so...
Yeah, and your letter that you, you know, helped with, and, and I really appreciate the council jumping in and helping as well, it was an overwhelming project that actually was completed really quickly, um, does say fourteen days, and so, it does give people time, I'm hoping they act faster, but, you know, if they don't...
Well, the mail takes, uh, almost fourteen days.
What do you express?
And then we would review everything again and hope that there's a good response, and that number of certified letters needing to go out won't be so close to a hundred, I mean, not that that's not possible, but it would be better to give people a chance to respond first.
Yeah, and certainly, communication is the key, hopefully, we hear from homeowners or lot owners that are struggling to meet that deadline, and certainly work with them and, and be sensitive to what's going on.
Mm-hmm. The only other idea I had, it got, it didn't stick, we stuck it to the wall, I asked a couple people, I think Sharon liked it, but I thought if you really don't have the wherewithal to do it, is there a fundraising opportunity for the fire department in the name of mitigation training or something, where, um, maybe there could be some of this stuff knocked down and, you know, uh, for a donation or an agreed amount or something, because I do worry about people who really, maybe don't have any connections here, they wanna comply, to at least give them an option, if they called the office, you know, it's, it's either gonna be, you know, me out there, or I'm gonna have to try to figure out who on city council wants to spend the day with goggles and jeans on, but I wonder if it could be turned into a, a positive thing, maybe, if there is any opportunity for that, for a fundraiser.
I think it could be done, as long as it was, the people who were, agreed to it, they would sign a liability that they're gonna be there doing that project.
Mm-hmm, I just, I, I hope that it's not hard, I hope people can just take care of it.
And we just got thinking, if we're sending people onto other people's property, that could be bad, but I think if, as long as somebody agreed to it and signed it, it'd be fine.
Is there a couple lots that...
There was a, there was a large fire that the county started ironically mowing
Yeah.
to, to, for fire mitigation, they started a fire between here and Summit, and that was a, that was a serious fire, and they were out there mitigating, because, because the mower hit a rock or something like that and started it. Oh, it's your son, nice. So there's liability, even in the mitigation, or somebody gets hurt or something like that.
Yeah, that's true, anyway, just thinking creatively, because I know there are some specific lots that people, like, those people don't even live in town, I mean, they may or may not even open the letter, you know, it just starts to kinda see where this problem could, could not get taken care of, but we're hopeful, so thanks for all the hard work on that, I think it's really important work. Is there anything else you can think of that we could get messaging out? Our newsletter's about to go out, um, I don't know if you wanna put something together and get that to Brooke, but, I mean, we're gonna be, obviously...
No, we're gonna put it out on social media, both, there's a few things you're gonna see going out, one, our, our fireworks policy, two, reminder on, um, mitigating the, the dry, the dry weeds and stuff around your house, and then three, the, the water, the water board really wanted a, a message out about, um, people being water-wise and, um, and, and being smart, don't overwater, and things like that, so there's gonna be a, a little bit of messaging coming out in, in the social media and the newsletter.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right?
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving now to item twenty-three, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up from the elected officials and staff, and we will start with Councilmember Topham.
Okay, well, um, I was gonna report on the fire department, so I know Chief Cavallari talked about the fireworks, um, I'm just gonna go through some procedure things that they've been doing, so, they have had four volunteers complete the red card process, and three others will do their red card the next time that it's offered, which is awesome, um, they've been responding to multiple lift assists, uh, calls, brush fires, including the ones by the Meeks Park, um, they've had some really good trainings that are inclu- that have included like ladder training, saws, and dip torches, and he said they've had some really great turnout with the volunteers coming out to those trainings, so, he's been happy with that, um, they're gearing up for the Fourth of July, and will be getting those fireworks, um, loaded and ready for our enjoyment, the first part of July, and then like we heard, um, just fireworks on the Fourth and the Twenty-fourth. Um, they have also been really focusing on cleaning and organizing the compartments of their rigs, so that they're all identical, so, as we hire, um, or have more volunteers, more recruits coming in, everything's in the same spot on each, um, fire truck, so that they can find things easily, um, they now have one new...
Um, they now have one new recruit that can respond during the day, which is huge for Parowan because the majority of the people... Oh, we have two now.
Well, two. Justin, who is just here, who lives in Paragon, he's on their department. He is now joining our department.
Oh, fantastic.
And he can respond during the day as well. So, we have two.
Okay, so now, we have two. That's even better than-
Additional.
-when I talked to him last. And then, I just wanna really give a special thanks to Roy Spartan and Paragon Fire for all of their help and support that they have given and that they are continuing to give and support us. Um, we wouldn't be able to do this without them, and I just think they just really need a good shout-out for... And just thank them. So, I don't know if maybe, I'll think of something that we can do to also thank them, but... And I'm just, I'm super excited about the way that the fire department is going, and the direction, and just the whole shift. Um, we've got a lot of people showing up, and it's, it's got a good feel, and I feel good about it, so. Great, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Sorry, I've been gone, so I don't really have much to say.
All right?
You've been, you've been recreating, right?
Yeah, I think we're in Nebraska. I'm not sure.
Well, I told someone you were on your honeymoon.
We're in the middle of nowhere right now.
I bet your anniversary, but honeymooning in Nebraska with your sweetheart of thirty years or forty years? Just kidding, thirty, right?
Thir- thirty years, yeah.
Thirty years. That's, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dean?
Um, two items that I, uh, just was involved with the last couple weeks. The Parowan Prevention Coalition had a, um, a day at, or evening over at the pool in, um, the park, and it was a great success. You know, there was, they actually had to stop people going into the pool 'cause we had over a hundred people, and, uh, I just go talk dogs again. And then, um, this is a nonprofit, the Parowan Ram Fuel. Uh, they had a great, great evening over at the Tanner Residence with, uh, you know, they, they have... It's like Disneyland in their backyard, you know?
You're right.
So, uh, and it was a really good turnout for their, their first event, and, and they actually raised money. It's a nonprofit to, uh, have school, uh, um, not lunches, but snacks and stuff for the elementary schools coming up this next year, and hopefully, they'll roll it into the, uh, high school. That's it for now.
Thank you.
I don't have anything since we talked about the electric board already, our board.
All right. Dan, do you have anything?
Just a, just a couple of things. Um, coming at us on, in upcoming to start thinking about, we, um, need to review our procurement policy and, and update that, modernize that to some best practices. Um, and, uh, so, we'll be working on that. Send, we'll have a work meeting. Um, we'll be looking at that. Also, the Prime West annexation. Um, Dallas made a little side comment about that. Um, after our last meeting here, um, sent, sent them a starting place on the annexation, um, slash development agreement. Um, realized that there were some similarities and some need for off-site road improvements, um, of ironically, Two Hundred North, just the exact opposite side of Two Hundred North. And put some, put some things like that as, as some starting language to discuss. Need for a second access probably before the first house is even permitted, just because it's at the end of where there is already subdivisions, and there's less, um, that... It's probably just not sufficient for what it is, let alone adding to it. And put water rights and all of the things in there that we would have anyways. And, um, the owner, Prime West, came in and said, "I'm ready to sign." And, and we said, "Well, you can't sign yet. It's gotta come back to the council." So, expect that to be actually moving quicker. Um, it, my first, my first draft of what the city would probably need, very similar to what we did with, with AJM, and he says, "I'm good with it." So, that's gonna be coming back on a, on a very near agenda to look at that.
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are we gonna have them do a frontage road along the freeway?
So, the way I wrote it in the initial thing was, they will need to have a second ingress egress into that subdivision, and that's mainly for emergency services. Um, they will have to build the frontage road through their development because that's on our transportation master plan, and they have to comply with that. Whether they continue that road on, out, and that's their second ingress egress, or whether they tie into one of the other master-planned roads, 'cause they could go straight south down through the RV park. Remember, we talked about the RV park being a road? They could simply complete that road. They'd have to acquire some property east of the RV park, and they could, that could be a second access. That may be how they... But we basically don't tell them how they have to do it. They just have to come up with a second access and present it to us, and it has to, and they have to comply with our master plan. Or theoretically, they could come back farther to the south. There is another master-planned road, and bring those both out to Six Hundred. We would like to see the frontage road complete, just from all of the, the transportation. But if, but if the property owner that owns that property that they would need to complete through doesn't wanna work with them, they gotta figure out another access, so we'll see.
Okay.
But, but again, he was fine with it. Um, we did have a meeting with Bowen Collins. They came out on site in the kickoff of starting the, the engineering, uh, preliminary engineering for the spring treatment plant. Um, talked with, we met with them in-house, and then went, drove up and looked at things. For about, I don't know, we spent a good half a day with them here. Uh, when, and that was all great, 'cause that's the kickoff, and they need to get boots on the ground and see what our actual, um, circumstances are as we start designing that. One interesting thing that came out of that is, as they've been getting ready to ramp up for this project, talking to the state Division of Drinking Water, who will ultimately approve this. If you remember, our springs were taken offline because we did a test, and it was during high-water runoff, and they said, "You're under influence of the Yankee Reservoir. You cannot have these springs in your system." The state is saying, "Before you go spend a lot of money to bring these springs back online, you should probably do an analysis of the Six Mile Spring and Five Mile Spring, and see if there's a chance that it could be brought online without it." That's what the state... This is not us begging the state to try to avoid that. The state is saying, "Hang on." Because the state's the one that loans us money anyways. "Before you go do that, let's take a cursory look at your springs." It could be that it's just turbidity because of the nature of springs, and you may be able to just inject chlorine and not have to do a full treatment. So, we're gonna do a, a, a small look at it. We're, we're under the impression, most likely, we're gonna have to do treatment. I don't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars in engineering to find out we're gonna do what we were planning on doing anyways. But I wouldn't mind spending five thousand or ten thousand if it means that we get to avoid millions in a treatment plant that we don't have to build. But here's the, here's the problem. If we, if there is a higher likelihood that we can bring those springs back on, the state is gonna make us do probably a year or two pilot study. So, there's gotta be a pretty good chance of being able to bring those springs back on. We don't just say, "Yeah, we think it'll work," and turn them back into our system. They're gonna wanna test that water and monitor it for probably a couple of years. So, there's a chance that we delay that project if it looks very likely. But if we save millions of dollars, it might be worth that. So, anyways, I'll, I'll give you more information if, if, if that happens to look like it might bear fruit. Um, and certainly, if we're gonna make that sort of a decision, we'll let the council, um, make that decision. Um, I'd be lying if I didn't say I'm burnt out this spring, from January till now, with all of our projects, with the salary study, with overhaul of our zoning, with all of the work we've been, we've been doing on everything. It, there's been a lot. So, I'm excited that we passed our budgets tonight. Maybe I can get back to work in sixty hours a week. Um, but I'm not saying that to say, "Don't cry for me, Argentina." What I'm saying is, is now we get to shift to audit. And, um, we get, you get done with budget, and then you, and then now you start wrapping up the prior year. Callie gets to do lots of work. Jerry gets to do lots of work. I get to do a lot of work as we wrap everything up and prepare for our audit, schedule our audit. Our audit usually won't happen till about September, October, but there's a lot of work to do. And this will be a lot of our new, our new staff, specifically Jerry, that will be doing a lot of work to get ready for that.
I feel like we just did the audit. We did.
You do. You just get done with the one, and then you get to the other. And so, that's the, that's the life of a finance director, of which we do not have one. We just kind of share a lot of those duties and, and things. But, so anyways, we'll be shifting their gears and doing journal entries, and, and, uh, we're still just moving forward, and things are looking good. That's all I have.
I didn't bring my notes from the meeting we went to about the, the statistics and the economic, um, report from SUU last night. Do you have any highlights that stuck in your brain?
Yeah, some, some big... So, so, so we were invited to an economic, um, update put on by the Kemsey Gardner Institute. That's who the governor's office uses to do all the economic forecasting and everything for the state. SUU had them come in and do an analysis of SUU and its impact on the region. And, um, they invited us to go, and it was last night, so we went and looked at it. A couple of interesting things about SUU. They are the third-largest employer in, in the region, including St. George, Washington County. SUU is, the only thing bigger is IHC. They're the biggest employer in the state. They're also the biggest employer in our region, and then Washington County School District. Third is SUU. Hmm, the economic impact, they're responsible for about three percent of the GDP of that region. They're responsible for, like, directly responsible for like twenty-seven hundred jobs, and indirectly responsible for about five thousand jobs. SUU is massive in their impact on our area. And they had a lot of other stuff. Those are the things that stick out to me. And I, I, I did, in the question-and-answer thing, I, I had to get a plug-in for Parowan, and-
He did a really good job.
She said, she said that having a university like that is this economic multiplier that just drives growth in communities and econ, economies in communities. And I said, "You know, there was a meeting that went on back in eighteen hundreds, and, uh, Parowan guys got on their horses and left 'cause we didn't want the college." And Cedar City, yes, said, "Yes, we want the college." That was the inflection point, the start of the population boom that crea... We were bigger before that point happened in time. And I asked the, 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 the study, the, um, the, the Kemsey Gardner economist, I said, "Do you think that that's a good reason why Cedar's population is what it is, and Parowan's population is what it is?" She said, "Absolutely. It's one of the biggest drivers and, and the university of, of growth and things like that." She said, "That, that theory holds true to me," so anyways.
And you talked about the mother town, and Mary Lee Stoll was sitting right in front of you within backhanding distance, and so, you must've done it justice, 'cause she, she liked it.
And I said, "We don't want the growth that Cedar has."
Yeah.
"We're the mother town, but we, we kinda like where we're at." And anyways, everybody loved that, those comments, but...
All right. I'll just do a quick fun report. But Old Rock Church Days was a great success, even with the wind, even with the threat of the power going off. It was a lot of fun. Uh, it was well-attended. It was really, really nice. Um, I don't wanna tell the amount that was raised, but in my mind, it's, it's quite impressive. And, um, I invited them to come tonight, but they said they'll come next time and give us their numbers. People always wanna know, "How much did we raise?" And the goal, if you'll remember, was fifty thousand because the Levitt Foundation would meet, would match fifty thousand. And so, I still even think that, you know, we have brick still, brick orders still coming in. So, I'm excited about that. The Zleskis are gonna come and present next council meeting. Um, I did also really enjoy that presentation last night, just, "I'm a T-bird," and "I know Rochelle's a T-bird," and... Dan a T-bird? I can't remember.
Yes.
Your T-bird? And so, I mean, just hearing all the positive things that happened with the university being in the, in the region. And I know people might've heard this story, but when we were looking at Parowan to move to, and we had some options on, on the table. What a weird time in our lives. But, um, one of the things that made it a place I was willing to live was that we had the arts. There was a theater here, and I went and met both the principals, and they both said, "Well, we definitely want you to come with six boys and..." Of course they would. "...at the time, eight children." And they said, "But we really don't want you to come and then leave. We want you to stay." So, that was really good, um, to get, you know, basically like, "Yeah, come here." But then, the, the other thing was, we were, we had a university, 'cause I wanted there to be a university. And I was really excited. And then, the funny one was, is the kids were like, "There isn't even any fast food." And then, I was looking on the thing. At that time, I don't even think there was Google. But somehow, I found out there was a Taco Bell, and so, they were like, "Oh, okay, then we can move there." Which is still really funny to me, because for most people, that would not be on the list. But at the time, there was, twenty-three years ago, there was a Taco Bell at the TA. And it's still, it's still interesting that those were the, the theater and the arts, the schools, the university, and the Taco Bell. So, there you go. Uh, reminds me of, your budget is, uh, is a picture of your priorities and values. And I think, you know, going through our budget tonight, it made me feel really good to see our priorities, the things that have been on our capital improvements, the things that we've done here, uh, together as a council. And I did think it was a good representation of our value system, so I really did appreciate your presentation. Um, the last thing is, I am on a housing committee for the state, and we meet for two-hour calls a couple times a month. And, um, you know, they, they kinda do little shout-outs to us every now and then 'cause they really like what we've done with Rural Done Right, and there's a lot coming down from the state. And in this advisory group, we'll get like fourteen things multiple times through Slido that we have to put in order of our preference of what we would want for our community. And just, um, so you know I'm out representing, I'm saying that we want, uh, the least mandates, the least state intervention on our municipal, uh, leadership, and that we wanna be able to run things through our city and through our council. And, um, there are a lot of pushing people out there for growth, and I think we're doing a great job managing ours. And those meetings are, are long and hard, but it's good to get the heartbeat of the state and kind of recognize, um, again, I think we're doing a great job here in Parowan. And even, uh, tonight, getting that annexation, uh, I was at Family Dollar a couple of days ago, and, and the cashiers were talking amongst each other, and you know, the people always ask me questions. And they said, "Didn't that go through? When's the first house being built?" And I realized, like, it has been a little while that we've been talking about this. And I do think that, um, it's indicative of the fact that we're really keeping an eye on things. And I appreciate everyone's hard work in every single committee, planning commission, historical, everything. I mean, people are coming, working hard, and we're coming together and making good decisions for the future of our community. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Do you... Callie, do you have anything you need to update with?
Just briefly, uh, Mayor and council members and staff, especially Dan, uh, just to compliment you on, on the developer, I'm sure, thought too long. Uh, professional and contemplative and calm, not always calm, 'cause there was vigorous debate. But, you know, on one of probably the most impactful, uh, developments in, in Parowan's history. And I think the lack of, uh, this room failed, or yelling, or screaming speaks volumes. I think it, it is indicative of the fact that, uh, you show up, and nobody here has ulterior motives, nobody has biases. I don't think anybody knew how they were gonna vote until the process was completed. And, and while my job is not to sway or vote, or be involved in any of that, but to ensure legal compliance, uh, I can say, you know, it's just a pleasure to watch good government work. And, uh, even, you know, the, the awards, our library and our pool, and, you know, those things are indicative of, of quality and, and good government. So, uh, it's fun to watch you work. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeremy, your last staff member standing. Oh, other than Keith. Okay. All right. So, with that, um, I do, and thank you for all of you that are here tonight and who stayed to the end of the meeting. It's always good to have people here with us as we work through these things. Um, I do need a motion to go into closed session. Um, this will be specific purposes allowed under the Open and Public Meetings Act, Utah Code Fifty-two dash four two oh five, including, um, discussions of the character, professional competence, or physical and mental health of an individual.
I'll, I'll make that motion to go into closed meeting with what you said.
I'll second that. Okay, roll call, and we'll start with Councilmember Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Rochelle, Topham, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you.